Calling to order the committee of the whole meeting for Diamond Lakes School District 76. Roll call please. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments this evening? And then we are going to move on to presentations. Just a note for the board members, Hiram was not able to be here tonight due to a conflict. And so Mr. Rogers is going to be taking notes.
Good evening, everybody. We have two amazing presentations this evening. The first one, I'm going to introduce Mr. Preble, who will introduce his team. It's going to be the West Oak Intermediate School Specials Classes Update. And then our second presentation, which Mr. Peterson will do the honors, will be the West Oak Middle School Encore Classes Update. Mr. Preble.
Thank you very much, board and everybody coming out today. Wanted to introduce my special teams, so why don't you guys come on up here? And with our, our West Oak Intermediate School, we have in PE, we have Mr. Alex Carrillo, Mr. Lars Campbell, and in STEAM, we have Mrs. Katie Levy, and our general music teacher and fifth grade band is Mrs. Megan Hagan. And they did something really cool this year. They started something brand new with the kids, based on student target portfolios. So, Specials is not just that fun thing to do. It is goal setting, it is progress, it is growth. And they're going to share tonight what they've been doing with that. So I'm very proud of them for their work. They even rolled this into their student learning objectives for the year. So they really took this idea and went with it. And I will leave it up to them to start it off. So come on up, guys.
Hello. Good evening. Just some background about what we did. We were really influenced by the student target portfolios that students were doing to set their goals, but also by our middle school counterparts, who are using portfolios to document, not only in their classes such as Ms. Stone's using it with her students for art, so also a way for students to see the growth of their accomplishments throughout. This also gave us a great way to collaborate as a team. So we could have more conversations about not only what we're doing in our classrooms, but the strengths and areas of growth we see within our students. This also gave our students voice. In fifth grade, they're able to give each other feedback on their portfolios and talk about what they like or think that the other person could work on. This also gives them areas to goal set, whether it's in my room, on a project they want to achieve, a fitness goal, or a song they might want to learn. Great way for conferences, like two weeks ago, to showcase their progress and also let them lead conferences in our area. So up there too, you can see each portfolio is personalized to that student. They took a picture, they did a little bit about them to kind of also make it more personalized. Each of these represents the different portfolios. Third grade is starting out with just taking a picture and learning those technology skills on how to put a picture into a Google slide. So we're also really focusing on those IST standards on the backend as well. And then you can see fourth and fifth grades with reflection pieces on what they're working on. And these are what they look like in my room. The slides, depending on which specials they're in, look slightly different. Here are some third grade examples of projects we've worked on. On the left, you'll see blueprints. So students learned about what a blueprint is and were to design their dream room. We did it on actual blueprint paper. We went on to Tinkercad so they can learn about CAD programs. And then they built it out of Lego, so they could see the full process and understand what blueprints do. In the middle, you can also see we did reflections, talked about light and shadow. They built their own mirrors and learned a little bit about the beginning of photography and reflections. On the bottom, we have some clay pieces and a cubism painting. In the top right is a video where they made a prosthetic hand. That should work if you would like to watch whenever. And this is made out of paper to not only teach them simple levers, but to teach them how people can use different materials to better themselves with what they don't have or what they do have. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Carrillo and Mr. Campbell.
Hi, I'm Mr. Campbell. In PE, we used the digital portfolio to discuss the importance of goal setting. The students use their portfolio to track and reflect on their fitness gram, physical fitness scores. At each grade level, the students are given an additional new fitness test that they are going to work at that year. And starting in October, the students took their, their first fitness gram fit, physical fitness assessment. They then took out those scores and set goals for themselves for the end of the year and what they wanted to do to, or how they were going to achieve those goals. We discussed why we set goals and the importance of setting realistic and obtainable goals with them as well. Throughout the school year, the students will then take the physical fitness assessments two more times. And after each assessment, those students will then come back to our portfolio and reflect on their goals that they made and if, make any changes if needed and reflect on what's working and what's not. I'm now going to let Mr. Carrillo talk to you about the student that we have up here on our slide here.
Hello, Mr. Carrillo. Excuse my voice, I'm a little, little, getting over a little cold here. But I'll take you through one of our examples from one of our students here this year. You can see in October, we did all the fitness testing. And this one was for the Acer, for their score. You can see that they got a 16 there. And then we also had them make a goal that they want to reach by the end of the year. So we'll be testing that, the Pacer again here in a couple of weeks here and towards the end of April. So that, that'll be the goal they're reaching for. So you could see they got 16, they made a goal of 55. And, and the goals they're making in the beginning, we were telling them to try to make them attainable, something that they know they can reach. But some of them were doing some pretty high goals. And, and as you can see, the, the goal was adjusted here in January. But also in October, we had them write something that they found challenging during the test. And then something that they can also do to improve on their score. So in January, you can see that they did improve their score. Took, it took a pretty big jump there, 16 to 38. That's something that's pretty cool for us to see and for them to see once they go back and kind of look how they've grown throughout the year. So really love to see that. And then, as I was saying, they adjusted their goal there down to 45, a little, little more reachable by the time April comes. So we're talking to them about kind of looking to where they first were, where they are now, and then looking to see what's something that they could actually attain by the end of the year. And then same thing, they're kind of writing, what, what can they do better? And what did they do well as well during that test? But that was kind of just one of our examples for Pacer. And we did those for all of our other fitness tests as well. I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Mrs. Hagan.
All right. In music, we, I am able to use the digital art portfolio to highlight the individual projects and also the group projects that we work on in music. So in the bottom left is an example of rhythm counting. Our team came across the Free Extension Mote, which is an audio recorder that can be directly inputted into all things Google. So, and here we put it into Google Slides, but it also works in Google Forms. So students can vocally record their answers instead of type. So there's been some really cool applications with that extension. So in that example, the student is counting the syncopated rhythms that we were learning about. In the top right is another individual project. The students learned last year how to use Soundtrap, which is a digital audio workstation. And in this project, they got some, some more choice. They got to choose an emotion that they wanted to represent. And then they had to create a song that sounds like that emotion. So they had some parameters that they had to use. You had to use at least five loops, it had to be at least 30 seconds long. But really from there, they, they got to kind of run with it. And it was pretty cool to see what they did with that song. And then they have a reflection piece that they had to describe what they liked best about their finished product and what they did musically within Soundtrap to make it sound like their chosen emotion. So in this case, the student chose to write a calm song. And what they liked best is, "It calms me." When I listen to this, I'm, I'm more relaxed. So it's cool that they can express themselves musically. And they were also able to download that song out of Soundtrap. And that's what the little speaker icon is. It's, they were able to take it out of Soundtrap so they can share their music with a wider audience. In the bottom right, this is an example of a group project. We, in fifth grade, were learning a couple of pieces that were written for the mallet instruments in the style of Zimbabwe music. So this has the music that they were learning in one frame, the finished product with all of the different parts being played individually and then put together all, all at once. And then the students wrote down what piece or what part they played. But it was really neat to have that representation of the group project, especially since fifth grade does not put on a performance for families for general music. So it's neat that they have these little snippets of things that are amazing accomplishments for fifth graders that they can have with them as they continue their learning. Then in the top left is another example of a mallet piece. This one is very challenging. It's a seven-piece, a seven-part arrangement of Carol of the Bells that actually these three gentlemen played when they were in fifth grade. And their goal, this, this class, their goal was to play at least as good as or better than when the now current eighth graders who are fifth graders, because they had a recording when they played it. So it's turned into a whole big self-critique. No, we need to do this again. No, we need you to click along. We have to work on this part a little more because we want to make it better. So it was definitely in their own hands, once we got into it and once everyone had their part. But it was, like I said, it was really cool. And I, I think they met their goal. It sounds really awesome. And then in the middle is an example of what we're doing with the fifth grade band. They also have goal setting with their Essential Elements book. We have minimums now that it's the third trimester that go up a little bit by each week. So they, or they are setting different goals for the trimester where they currently are and where they would like to be after the six weeks. And then they can also add this into their digital art portfolio. And the great thing about this is it's only going to continue when they're in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade band. In fifth grade, they're just talking about what they want to do with their EE book and how they can achieve their goal. And you know, that's again, going to be great practice because as they continue with Mrs. Rosales, these goal settings for their band progress is not going to go away. Most of these are also links where you can hear the students play. In the top two and the bottom, so at your leisure, you can hear some fantastic examples of some general music things. And with that, are there any questions? Yes.
I'm just curious if there's a way that parents can view those digital portfolios from home?
They are all housed in their STEAM Google classrooms, which everyone, all parents have access to.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your time.
And while we're transitioning, the district leadership team thought it would be a really nice way to celebrate and recognize all that we do outside of the core academics, that we have such a rich and robust program that starts in pre-K and goes all the way up to eighth grade, as you'll see. We have some great student performers and their families here tonight to celebrate some of the music and fine arts programs that we have at the middle school. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Peterson, who is going to introduce his staff who are here to celebrate and recognize the encore spotlights.
There we go, the, the green button, right? First of all, thank you guys for, for the, offering us the opportunity to kind of highlight a, a very important area of our school. And thank you for all of our, our visitors here who have joined us today. Really, I know we, we presented to you guys about a month ago and, and our student ambassadors highlighted a number of areas. But we definitely wanted to show off an, an area here that definitely deserves its, its time and recognition. So if we, if I could have our, our encore teachers come up, please. Ms. Rosales was not able to make it. So, so Ms. Hagan's was going to, going to, going to join our, our middle school team for the evening. So Ms. Ms. Rosales is our, is our band director, along with Ms. Barkowski, who teaches choir, and then also, and then also music. Mr. Dora, who, who has, has, has taught here, who has fearlessly accepted the challenge of Project Lead the Way, formerly known as FUSE. But, but along with that, he's, he's, he's taught social studies here for quite some time. So very, very excited for him to, to take on that role here in that challenge. Also here, Ms. Stone, who teaches our, our art program. And then also Ms. Byrne, who does our digital media arts. I could go into the clubs and other activities that they're involved in, but it, it might take too long. So definitely very, very involved, not only in the actual classes that they, that they teach, but also just the, the involvement of the school and just lifting our, our entire building up. So I can't say enough about, about these individuals and Meg, by the way. So, a, a, along with that here, you know, I, I also want, I, I'm excited to, to kind of show off here some, some of the, the great talent that is coming out of our building. The nice thing about our encore program, it, it allows kids to explore their interests. It allows them to explore their passions. And, and in a lot of cases, what we see when we, when we speak with our, our high school, our, our high, high school comrades is that those talents go up to the high school level. And, and they, and they continue to grow and, and just kind of show off and really represent West Oak in such a, such a positive way. So we're going to have some, some of our, our talented eighth graders join us as well in regards to Leah, Tracy Tobar, we have Andrew Tayas, Hered Alba, and Francisco Ortiz. So I'm going to turn it over to Meg, and she took Cliff Notes. Jess, just kind of coast her up a little bit tonight, and then, and then we'll kind of go down the line. Okay. Thank you, Meg.
So one of the great things about being in a campus school is I'm very familiar with the band program, so I have no problem speaking about it today. So in NIMCON, the Northern Illinois Music Conference, students from sixth to eighth grade all participated in solo and ensemble on February 25th. All of our groups that performed earned either a two or a one rating, with the exception of the trio who you will hear, which earned a one plus, a perfect rating. The seventh and eighth grade band had their music festival at Lake Zurich Middle School South on February, March 10th. And they earned a one rating for their performance. And then the sixth graders had the Art Hildebrand Festival on March 14th at Lake Zurich North Middle School. And they went specifically just for judges' feedback. There was no rating at this particular festival. And then the Mundal, or the jazz bands traveled to Mundaline High School, so not a far trip, on March 11th. And both of the jazz bands performed and did really well. The top jazz band earned a one rating. And with the student target portfolios, so as I spoke earlier, the fifth graders are specifically sticking to their EE numbers, their Essential Elements numbers. Sixth, seventh, and eighth grade does as well, but they also include their scales. They include their, the rubrics from these festivals, so they can see and have included the judges' feedback. They're also including recordings from their Essential Elements books. So there's a lot more that can go into their band digital portfolio as they get older. And then today, performing their one plus, Cantina Band and Imperial March, we have my former students, Harred Fernando and Andrew. Let's get you some stands.
Hi, everybody. My name is Susan Barkowski. I teach choir and general music at West Oak Middle School, and then fifth grade choir as well at the intermediate school. So talking again about NIMCON, our organization that we use for both the band and the choir contests is our Northern Illinois Music Conference. And they host both solo and ensemble and the music festival. So at solo and ensemble for choir, this is something that is an opportunity that students may sign up for, but they're not required to sign up for. So every student that went to sing a solo this year did so because they chose to. They wanted to put in that extra work. We did have all of our students who participated get a Division II or Division I rating, with the exception of Leah, who is going to be singing later on tonight. She did get a one plus, perfect score. And then the music festival on March 10th is the group festival. So we take an ensemble, or in this case, we took two ensembles this year. We took our seventh and eighth grade choir, which is something we do every year. And then for the first time this year, we brought Sunrise Singers, which is our show choir that meets in the mornings before school. And I just want to give a special shout out to them because they actually voted on whether or not they wanted to do contests this year. And it was almost unanimous that they wanted to go and they wanted to do it for a rating. So it was really driven by their desire to do that and to work hard for it. And both groups got a Division I rating. They're graded in about, I, I looked it up. It's nine categories on the rubric, and they're, they're graded on a four, three, two, one scale in these nine different categories. And the culmination of that rating then puts them in a range that will tell you if they're Division I, Division II, so on and so forth. So it's pretty extensive, and we're very proud of them for just being so high achieving with that and working so hard for it. We also, just as a note about Sunrise Singers, this year we had, everything we did this year was completely student-choreographed, which was really nice for me. And really amazing, because we just have students who are, again, just wanting to go above and beyond and share their multiple talents and their skills to work together and do something as a team. In general music, I was very excited to listen to Mrs. Hagan's presentation because we have so many things that are just really developing so nicely from the intermediate level into the middle school level. So I know she, I don't have it on here, but, oh, I do, I have literacy on here. So we spend quite a bit of time also working on like learning our rhythms, making sure that the students are able to be like empowered to be able to read the music on their own so that they are able to go into any other setting and be able to apply those skills when they do need to play another instrument or sing a song or something in a setting outside of the classroom. And then in our piano unit, we apply that directly. So in our piano unit, students come in and we really just start from square one. And they're having to read and make sure that every song they learn, like they're able to read it, they're able to count it. So it's very little me showing them how to do it. And it's a lot of providing them with the skills that allow them to read it on their own, which has been really exciting for our piano unit. And then just recently, this trimester, we started a system where we're doing weekly goal setting with the piano students so that they're able to know what their individual target is going to be. And that target will be different depending on their experience level and just their, you know, their rate of learning, how well they're doing, progressing. We'll set a weekly goal to help them know like what they need to achieve that week for their piano unit. I apologize, my voice is, I'm also getting over cold. So I realize I'm hearing myself talk. And then in Soundtrap, we, really, it's a, it's a wonderful, it's a digital audio workstation. And it's a tool that we can use for so many different things, like Mrs. Hagan was talking about, doing an activity that was both composition and SEL, which is something we, they continue on in the middle school. And we connect that to the elements of music. And then I've also used it to explore different genres of music that we might not typically study. So I've done a unit where students are writing their own rap, and they had to perform it and record it with a backing track. So it's just been a great way to, it's a tool that we're able to use to get at a number of different standards. And then our guitar curriculum this year has been developing quite a lot. We've got that picture there at the top of some of our students who were really excited to work together. But they, this was sort of a, a new series that I started that was, again, just really more focused on getting the students to be able to work at their own pace and at their individual level so that they can make more progress. And we just found that the students got really excited about it. They were wanting to bring in their guitars at lunch and play. And it definitely became a cool thing for guitar to be a thing at school. So that was really exciting for us. And finally, we have Ms. Leah here tonight. Leah Tracy Tobar is going to be singing her solo that she performed at Solo and Ensemble. And again, she got her one plus rating for this, so I'm very excited to hear her.
I'm just going to push her up. Oh, yeah. So this is the girl I mean to be from the secret garden.
Excellent. Good to see everybody. It's hard to follow all of that. That was amazing. Nice job, guys. Congratulations. So, I'm Mr. Dore. I'm the project lead-the-way teacher. It was certainly a little intimidating this past summer going through training for this program. It's very rigorous and very intense. And probably the thing that I noticed the most was the fact that it's all student-driven. It's kind of like, you know, when you have children that are learning to drive, and the first time you put them behind the wheel and let them drive while you're in the passenger seat. It feels that way when you start this program because the kids are really in charge of the pace of learning and, you know, how they're digesting the material. So, its focus is getting kids at a younger age interested in engineering as a profession. And the high schools have really bought into it. Both Stevenson and Mundeline have this program. And Mr. Cunningham and I last year sat down and talked quite a bit about, you know, how this would fit in at West Oak Middle School. And it's really a three-year program. So, in 6th grade, they start with design and modeling. Down the road, this is the way it's going to look. Second year will be computer programming. And then, third year, we're still, we're still in conversations about what we're going to be doing in third year. So, your students would start in 6th grade with design and modeling, and then move on from there. So, what you see in these pictures are just examples of some of the projects that kids have done. So, they are given real-world scenarios. I think most of the projects that are up there are the foot orthosis project, where they read material about cerebral palsy, and they're given a challenge, basically, and a list of materials. And my job is simply to provide them with the materials and let them, let them go and figure out a real-world solution to the problem. And it kind of gravitates up in difficulty and challenge level. So, it's been a great program. I've loved it. See a lot of kids that, you know, might not necessarily be as interested in academics, really jumped on this program and really enjoyed the hands-on texture of the program itself. So, it's been a great program, and I appreciate the board's support in adopting this program this year and look forward to where it's going to go in the future, the next three years. So, thank you.
That's okay. Hello. I apologize for my voice. I've been inhaling clay all week. So, I apologize if I sound raspy. These are just a few of the things going on in art. I could go on for days to discuss what we're doing. But, I chose ones that the students have told me are their favorites. The top-left one, we do a lot with optical illusions in 6th grade, playing tricks on the students' eyes. Some see it, some don't, and that's totally okay. The one on, and Leah, I had no idea you were going to be here. I know that Mrs. Salzman, at one of the board meetings, discussed a project that we were integrating about picking someone that was influential in your life. And I chose Leah's for where it says Project 2 Charcoal Portrait. She decided to do hers with different gradients of charcoal. And this singer, the singer, was influential to her. While I have that one, my students do a art portfolio every single year. They started in 6th grade, and then by 8th grade, they have a whole culmination of three years' worth of their art projects. I teach the students how to write an artist statement. At first, I, they did not like writing in art class, but I tried to explain to them that it's wonderful to reflect on your artwork and things that, you know, when you look at your artwork, there might be something that you want to find tweak next time. So, by 8th grade, they do say, majority of them say, "Thank you for a little bit of writing in art class." We do clay. The 8th grade, I'm doing something new with them this year. They're doing a lot of choice in 8th grade. I give them the foundation that they need in 6th and 7th. And then, in 8th grade, there's maybe one or two projects that they have to do. But then, after that, I let them have their own voice. We sit down together. We discuss what they would like to do. If someone really loves painting, then they focus on painting for an extra couple of weeks. If they want to do something more 3D, they focus more on the 3D aspect. If there's some supply that I do not have, I go out and I purchase it for them if that's something they would like to experiment with. I just think it's important when it comes to 8th grade, let them have a couple more choices. And the bottom-left, one student loved reading. She asked if she could bring in an old book and do a project revolved around that. I said, "Sure, why not?" A fan favorite, the bottom-middle is we do an abstract sculpture with spray painting. And the kids just learn different techniques, how to spray paint, learn about what abstract art actually is. And then, the far-right, another fan favorite because they get to eat it at the end. We do a candy still life where they really enjoy it. And I explain to them how to focus on, you know, as much of the detail and make their picture as realistic as possible. And then, I also just wanted to put a little plug-in that the art teachers have their big art shows coming up. Mundeline Art Show is April 27th. And then, the Stevenson one is May 16th. And we're looking forward to seeing a lot of you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Byrne. I teach digital media arts for 6th through 8th grade. And some of what we do is right here for you to see. We focus on those three main areas. We can maybe try to fit in some others if there's time. But we mainly focus on graphic designing, filmmaking, and new this year is photography. You can see up in the top right, we have Trixie's over there with the calendar that she has designed and laminated herself. She was super proud of that project. Actually, that one involved kind of going along with Mrs. Stone in art class. You know, we have a bit of choice as well. I'm going to skip to photography because it kind of goes along with that. We're very, very lucky to have gotten some cameras this year. And the students have just, they've gone above and beyond with it. All four of them, you know, well, three out of the four of here have done photography, three currently. And the work that they're doing is just outstanding. I'm being honest when I say the yearbook this year, side note that I do, it's going to be, I would say, maybe 98% of the pictures are all them. They're all the students. They're having a blast with it. The monthly assemblies, they just want to form a line and, you know, take the pictures for any event that we have going on. So, that's just some of the work that bottom right there. Actually, tomorrow, I told the kids, Harette and Leah, to bring their coats to class unless it's raining. We're going to be going outside. So, it's giving us a lot of different opportunities that we've never had this year. The choice comes in because we were building the program. We're building the curriculum right now. So, we don't really have a class set yet. And this year, actually, it hasn't really been an issue where they're choosing design or photography. If they finish early, we haven't really had a problem kind of flip-flopping. So, we kind of worked together as a class on that. And then, halfway through, we flip and we do filmmaking. With filmmaking, you can kind of see some of the things that the students are getting an opportunity to work with. We have some microphones, we have tripods, there's ring lights, backdrops, some, you know, basic kind of lighting equipment, things that they're learning kind of how to set up. And then, they're, you know, we have a curriculum now where we're studying kind of how to hold the camera to get the shot that they want. You know, if there's somebody who you want to show them powerful and angry, how are you supposed to hold the camera? You know, so the students, they get the camera and they want to just make a movie. So, I kind of slow them down a little bit, and we kind of go through some of the process with it. Pretty sure, yeah, that, oh, there is one more. To go along with the cameras this year, we also, we do have Ms. Rudd here. I had the joy of having her students experiment with the cameras. They're DSLR Nikon Rebel cameras. So, they're the big ones, you know, they're the big ones. And the, this class had an opportunity to play with the cameras as well. Some of you have seen this film before. It is modified for a minute. Do we, did we want to still play this or no? All right. This kind of showcases what these...
So, that's a little bit of what, we're so proud of them, of what they've done this year with the cameras. So, thank you. It's a little bit about the program. Thank you.
Any questions for our board?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to thank you guys all for just your passion and your dedication to the students. I mean, it's really obvious to us just how much you care and how much you pour into it every day. Thank you so much.
And I just wanted to quickly thank all the students for coming tonight. Your performances were outstanding. Obviously, those 1+ ratings were very well-deserved. So, thank you so much for coming and sharing your talents with us.
Yes, I want to thank the students for their confidence and their courage to perform and to do the solo and to do it all by yourself and to do it without any coaching. I thought it was amazing. And teachers, thank you so much for sharing not only your profession, but also your passion because it's very evident every single day. I'm able to see you, but it's great that the board sees you because I know they support the arts and all the extracurriculars that we do, which are a part of our day, which we love. And like I said, it's really helping the children. We embrace, we empower them, and they're able to excel. So, thank you so much for your leadership in facilitating these programs. Parents, thank you for your support in being here tonight. That concludes our presentations. And we are going to go through our business portion of the agenda, but you are all welcome to stay if you'd like to. But if not, this is your excuse to leave. Thank you so much again for coming tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Prebble and Mr. Peterson and Mr. Freiburger for your leadership with the programs at your schools.
After those at-see any presentations, we will move on to our business agenda. We have a couple items for review tonight and one item for action. The Amicus Vote Agenda is our first item, and that is up for review. The next item is a personnel item, and that is up for action this evening. So, be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel item as depicted on the agenda. We have one leave of absence. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes.
Yes.
That motion is approved. And the next item we have up for review is the Consolidated District Plan. I don't know if, Mr. Cunningham, did you want to speak to that? Great, thank you. That's helpful. Did anyone have any questions this evening? No? Okay, well, we can revisit that before the next, before we approve the next meeting. Thank you. The next item for review is the District Leadership Contract. Draw a memo about. And that wraps up our business agenda. Moving on to board discussion. I do not have any items. Do you have any items? Okay. And we did not have any Freedom of Information requests under notices and communications. And we have some news from CEDOL, and we also have a bunch of fun District 76 highlights. Did you want to talk about them?
Sure, sure. Included in our District 76 highlights, as you know, we recognize and celebrate a special moment of the month. And this month, or I should say, last month in March, we celebrated the West Oak Intermediate School flash mob. Did you know that not only can they sing, they can dance too? So, they were motivating the students... So um, they were motivating um, the students to get ready for I R testing that was taking place over the month, through the month of March. So it was just getting them excited um, and motivated to take the tests. Then we had our wellness day and our institute day, which was the Friday before break, which was March 24th, which was um, so in the morning, we had um, a great speaker that uh, Mr. Freiberger had recommended through um, his graduate courses. Uh, Dr. Gloria McDaniel Hall, who spoke about belonging, equity, diversity, and inclusion. So it was very um, nicely presented. And then we all broke off into small groups where each one of the district leadership team um, took a small group and asked staff, that was very nicely mixed up from pre-K through eight. Um, in each of the nine groups, how do you feel that students um, feel about belonging? And what do we, what can we do to make students feel more that, like that they belong, that their voice matters, that they feel included? Um, what are some of our blind spots and what are some goals that we can set for next year? Um, as we continue our focus on equity and diversity and inclusion um, in our district. And then we um, ended the day with many um, wellness activities. As you can see in the pictures, we had a virtual reality um, session. We had a fine art session that Mrs. uh, Stone led for staff. And then um, Dr. Berger led us in three hours of Peloton. So you could, well, she, she led three hours of Peloton. We each could take an hour of it. So that was a picture at the end. As you can see, no, we did not just shower. That was after the class, we were all soaking wet. So it was just a great day for people to pick and choose if they wanted to read, if they wanted to take and get involved with fine arts, if they wanted to do something that was virtual reality, take a walk, do something rigorous, um, such as a Peloton. There was also, you know, um, individualized fitness that Mr. uh, Corillo did, you know, in the gym. And there was volleyball tournament. So it was great. It was just a great way for staff A to um, kind of rejuvenate and digress from uh, heavy week of, or heavy month of testing and apparent teacher conferences and also connect with each other, um, focusing on health and wellness. And then we have, keeps coming, these babies keep coming. We have um, Mrs. Roth and her baby um, Tatum that you can see and um, that was born in November. So lots to celebrate in District 76.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that with us. Um, we now move on to public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. Since we have lost all of our audience, um, can see that we do not have any public comments or petitions. Moving on to others. Does anyone have any others this evening? Okay, um, we do not have executive session this evening. So I will make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Yes. Great, that concludes the meeting. Thank you. To all of those of you who celebrate Passover, I hope you have a nice seder or seder's. Yeah. There's not a lot better.